Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 24th City Council meeting. It is 7:00 PM, and it's good to see you all. If you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to open forum. You can call into the open forum by dialing 1-415-655-0001. Meeting ID is 2633-133-9035, and the password is 1234. Also, you can, for future reference, if you want to have your comments read, you can send them to Kelly Nguyen before 2:00 PM on Council Days. So that'd be K W Y N N at richfieldmin.gov. Or you can do them if you are right here in person. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for open forum? All right, is there anybody that's currently online?
There is not.
All right, so it's unusual not to have anyone for open forum, but I guess we will move on. So next, we'll go on to approval of the minutes of the City Council work session of October 10th, 2023, and the City Council meeting of October 10th, 2023.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections or changes? All right, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the minutes. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
I'd move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, and we liked that we switched the order of this, so thank you to whoever did that. Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've approved the agenda. Next, we're going to move on to our presentations, and we have two tonight. And we'll start off with the Arts Commission. And so I want to welcome co-chairs Eric Begonik and Larry Nelson. So, thank you, and we'll turn it over to you.
Eric.
Eric Begonik, other co-chair.
Thanks.
No worries there.
And we're happy to be able to present to you this evening. As always, 2023 was a busy year for the Arts Commission. We had filled with a lot of events out in the community. Starting with, back in April, we did an event for the first time ever for the Arts Commission at Woodlake Nature Center as part of their Earth Day, where we did art projects featuring some of the natural resources that were at the park available. So it was a good time. A lot of the kids liked making little paintings and projects, things like that. It was good, it was a good event.
And then we also hosted our Art in the Parks at the Farmer's Market series once again, and we expanded it this year from two events to three events because they were so successful last year. The first one was, we kind of collaborated with the Parks and Rec Department and the Farmer's Market with their initiative to bike to the market. And so we had bike decorating activities for kids and families. And many grownups did this as well without kids there. So it was intergenerational, which was pretty great. This was on June 10th.
And then the second one was in July 16th, and it was a seed art project. So a chance to make, sort of glue seeds on little whatever, drawings that...
Yeah, I think we had some canvases. Yep. Yeah. And it's pretty cool. This year, we were in a more centralized location in the market, so there were a lot more participants. Previously, we'd been in the old art space where the sandwich or the pizza and ice cream shop is. So we were kind of out in the middle of things, which was really great. And then we did, in August 12th, a food art project with vegetable stamping, again, to kind of go along with Farmer's Market themes. This was our third event, and it was successful, as you can see from the art projects there. Families had a lot of fun making those.
We also were part of partners with the Galaxy Bike Party and as well as the Richfield Lake Poetry Walk. So those are two different groups, two different groups. One of them in Richfield asked the Arts Commission to sort of partner with them. Last year, when they did the mural at the Galaxy Foods, we were there as part of that. There's actually a plaque for the Arts Commission on the wall over there. We were invited back to have a presence at their celebration on 5th, 19th. Also, we've been involved, even though we weren't the main group, we partnered with Mississippi Valley Poet and Writers, who approached us about doing poetry around Richfield Lake. So we did an event with them when they first did it. And then they also, they changed the poetry, started new poetry in August, and you're part of that as well.
You may have also seen us at Pen Fest. We kind of redid our bike activity since there were a lot of people biking, and we had supplies left, so a little bit of recycling there. But it was fun to be teaming up with Parks and Rec and other Richfield groups in the same area at Pen Fest, so we could all kind of collaboratively answer a lot of questions from the public.
This was a fun event. Again, partnered with the Richfield Rec Department at the Dog Park in Roosevelt. We had a park in the park, which is a Halloween costume contest for dogs. We provided treats for dogs and people, and took pictures. We had costumes that dogs wear. Granted, you see one up in the top, had the little lion mane on. So it was fun. The dog owners were really appreciative that it was a fun event. And there are pictures at the bottom of the different dogs over there in the costumes that they had.
We've been busy in so many other ways, too. Earlier in the year, we helped sponsor a high school senior art show again. We have our little free library, the city photo contest voting that we did, along with some decorating of electrical boxes. We also supplied volunteers from RAC for the Juneteenth event, always reviewing new public art, assisting with art displays in public spaces, et cetera. We will be decorating the planter boxes in Veterans Park again with winter-themed decor. And then we also have an upcoming event at the Richfield Dual Languages School that is not on this list because it's brand-new, as of last month. And then an author event in November, where local authors are going to showcase their works to the public, and people can come hear them speak about their books.
Just lastly, I just want to thank everybody who was on the commission this last year. My co-chair, Eric, was fantastic, especially this year was a little tougher year for me to be able to get to some of our events that we did. And Eric stepped up and did a lot of that, so I appreciate that. As well as Karen Wolverton, who was a secretary, and has been on the commission for several years. Jaden Mark, and Stephanie Coop, and Stephanie Jacobson, Joyce Marie, E.J. Skog, who's the community services location at Lake, I shouldn't say. Carl, the staff from the Rec Department, who's been very helpful to us. And then, of course, Sharon, who's been liaison from the City Council. Sharon has been to every meeting, so we appreciate that. And then, and it was also her idea to do the author event in November.
And I'd just like to give a special shout-out to Larry and Karen and Joyce. They are finishing year nine on the commission, and so they are graduating to non-commission work. And, but I'm sure you'll see them all volunteering in the city. I just want to recognize that they've done such a great job filling the community with arts, and I just wanted to give them a special shout-out.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you all for your service. We really appreciate it. And I didn't realize we had three commission members graduating. Wow. Can you tell us about the RDLS event? Do you have any details about that?
We're going to finalize planning here coming up in our November meeting. We are going to an event on November 10th, is that correct? In the evening, we're going to be supplying, like, an art project for families to do. I forget the theme of the event. Do you remember?
Yeah, I don't remember the theme offhand.
So what...
But it's, it's a, it's an event that the Dual Language School does on a regular basis, and we were, have been invited to participate. And this was actually, they had invited us to participate previously, but we weren't, I don't believe we had anybody available that could help out. So they have invited us again.
Yeah, it's like one of their family nights that they have happening.
Oh, cool. So we'll hear more about it after the fact. That would be great.
Exactly.
So thank you all for what you do to bring art to our community. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add? Councilmember Wayland?
I would echo the thanks, both to the entire commission, to Larry, who's here, the others who aren't, who have been dutifully growing, not just maintaining, but growing the impact of the Arts Commission over the last nine years. It's been fun to see. And as is appropriate, you always have the prettiest presentation. And it's, it's great to see all the, all the pictures, not just of the art, but of the community having so much fun doing it. So thank you for all that you bring to Richfield.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I'd like to also thank the Arts Commission because as a liaison for the City Council, I'm not really part of the board, so to speak, or making official decisions. But it's always, it's always been this past year very nice to be included in decisions and ideas that things have come up. And it is true, it was a lot of fun, you know, like the Farmer's Market stuff, and, you know, just working with kids and adults and, you know, and the co-members of the board, that they bring a lot of ideas and fun to the city.
All right, Councilmember Troutman?
Yeah, I want to echo those thoughts. Everything's been said, but it's not yet been said by everybody. But I really want to, want to lift up how you've, and the commission has approached arts in Richfield, that it's not just physical art, but in poetry, and in spoken word, and in music, and in poetry expressed in our, in our sidewalks and physically in the world. I just appreciate your vision, and I hope it continues to grow.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all you do.
I just want to just briefly say, as the outgoing chair and nine-year member of the Arts Commission, that I know that budgets are always tough for at City Council levels. I think that I encourage the City Council to find money to promote the arts in the city.
Well-received admonition.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to a presentation from the Planning Commission, and we have Chair Eddie Holmvig-Johnson here to deliver that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the Planning Commission doesn't have quite the same photo opportunities. And it was really wonderful, actually, to see some of the work that the Arts Commission is doing, and I'm interested in following up on some of that. But much of the work that we do at the Planning Commission is ministerial in nature and isn't necessarily digging into a policy or anything like about, you know, dividing a plot or things like that. But we have really had opportunities to have some good discussions. Last night was certainly the busiest or most packed Planning Commission in quite a while, not since the Brew Hub did we have quite the turnout. And it was, it was wonderful to hear residents express their opinions that were different than commissioners and different than supporters of the project. But I think it's important for people to be heard. And that is the wonder of local government, and especially in a community like Richfield, where it's very easy to get involved and it's very easy to express your feelings. So we've had things like that, and then just also things like conditional use permits for the, there were two daycares that had to move in not a lot, large amount of time, and they needed some conditional use permits. We've done some findings of consistency, stuff that's not that exciting. But when we have also gotten to dig into, like, the elimination of the MR1 district and allowing duplexes in the residential district. And that's, that's been wonderful, because we can, it's a, I can see the deliberations that we have impact projects and things that happen in the community, and that's quite an amazing feeling. When I first got on the commission, you know, we had a meeting where we talked some nitty-gritty. It was about a bike storage in an apartment building. And I made an amendment about making sure that they, that they didn't require people to pay additional fees to store their bikes. That was a small thing, but it will impact residents in that development in future. And that was, it was a pretty amazing feeling to see how we can get involved and dig into, dig into things and really make the community a better place for everyone to live. I, as Chair, I've tried to create some initiatives. I regularly scheduling to meet with Planner Crosby and Ms. Villa in the Planning Department, so that we, to kind of understand what their work does and how we interact with the Planning Department in trying to make sure that our work is efficient and that we understand what we're doing. And really, so I can understand some of the internal workings, because I come from an education background, not from, you know, community development or planning or anything like that. So it has been a wonderful experience being Chair, and it is wonderful to be able to interact with residents of the community in, in different ways.
Thank you so much. I have the good fortune of being the liaison to the Planning Commission, so I go to all the meetings. And I appreciate the way that you've been, like, having, like, I don't know what the word is, professional development is not the word. But I know you've had work sessions, and there's been a very stand, everyone on the commission takes it very seriously, and there's, like, earnest discussions about how to do things the right way, and I really appreciate that. And that came across last night. Like you said, it was, like, standing room only in here and packed, and, and people listened and were polite, and it was very good to hear all the different viewpoints. And there were also a lot of great discussion from the Planning Commission. So thank you for all the work that you all do and for your leadership. Is there anything else that anyone else would like to add? Councilmember Troutman?
I just want to say, say greetings from my son, who you used to teach. And, and I want to say a special thank you to you and the rest of the commission. The Transportation Commission is a commission that sometimes gets a lot of direct community feedback. And I always want to acknowledge that that's not, that's, that's not always easy or comfortable, but really, really important. And there are probably a few things that keep me up about being a council member than how we build infrastructure that's going to last for three, four generations and have impacts on our community. And so I just want to, I just want to say thank you to you and all the commissioners for, for really laboring hard to do the best, the best that you can for our city.
All right, anything else that anyone wants to add? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you. I, I like that you, you said the Planning Commission is, doesn't have as many photo opportunities, and not that it's less fun, because I, I do think that there, it's true that you have contentious public hearings, contentious discussions at times, but that it, it's literally building our city. And so I, I again appreciate, as others have said, all of the work that you put into that, and also the, the work that you, as Chair, put into finding ways that even when we disagree, that that continues to be a respectful and honoring discussion that is moving toward the goals of the, of the city. And so I just know that, that hard work is not unseen, and it certainly is appreciated.
Again, thank you so much for all your hard work. All right, next, we'll move on to the Consent Calendar, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's Consent Calendar, item A, consider the first reading of proposed franchise ordinance in agreement with Centerpoint Energy, Minnesota Gas. Centerpoint Energy, allowing and setting terms for Centerpoint Energy's use of the city right of way, and setting the public hearing and second reading for November 28th, 2023. And this is the only item on tonight's Consent Calendar.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for this?
I'd move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved that item. Next, we'll move on to the proposed ordinance, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Troutman.
Right. My, my screen just went dark for some reason, so...
All right, well, we'll share...
Could I, could I just, so I don't strain, oh, here we go. Thank you, Councilmember Haverly. This is a motion to consider the approval of the second reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 9, Section 9, 26 of the Richfield City Code to include managed natural landscapes, ornamental plants, and rain gardens as new definitions, as well as amending the maintenance standards for grass height from six to eight inches. Effective January, or, excuse me, July 1, 2023, municipalities are required to allow property owners and occupants to install and maintain managed natural landscapes. Chapter 62, House File 1830, and Senate File 1426 is the omnibus state government finance bill that was signed into law May 2024, May 24, 2023. Article 3, Section 9 creates provisions of law, as Minnesota statutes, et cetera, require all statutory cities or home rural cities to allow an owner, authorized agent, or authorized occupant of any privately owned lands or premises to install and maintain managed natural landscapes. And defines, and defines a number of associated terms. It also states the managed natural landscapes may exceed eight inches in height and be allowed to go to seed, but must be maintained and cannot include noxious weeds. Also states that weeds and grasses that are not part of a managed natural landscape cannot exceed eight inches in height or be allowed to go to seed. Specifically, managed natural landscapes does not include turf grass lawns left unattended for the purpose of returning to a natural state. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was heard by the City Council on October 10th, 2023. And I, unless staff has anything to add, I would move, we approve the second reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 9, Section 9, 25 of the Richfield City Code to allow for the managed natural landscape and natural turf grass lawn not to exceed eight inches, and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Haverly.
I just wanted to say, I think this is mostly sort of required because of state preemption, and it's rare to be excited about state preemption, but I think this actually does nudge us in a good direction. I think this makes a lot of sense for Richfield. And just, to anybody who's interested, I think managing your lawn this way, if you are interested in being more pollinator-friendly, more environmentally-conscious, is a much better approach than, like, a no-mow may, just like letting the grass go, which is explicitly prohibited. So do it right, do a managed natural landscape as we now allow.
All right, any other discussion? All right, thank you for the staff for updating this. I know there are a number of people that were very excited in the community about this. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed that ordinance. Next, we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, at our last meeting, Kathleen Balaban made a suggestion about putting pictures up for the commissioner pages and in our recruitment materials. We had already thought that was a good idea. It's in the works, it's on our long list of things to do. And we will be doing group photos. We do need to get the commissioner's permission to put even group photos up. But we are working on it, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Claims and Payroll.
I'd move Claims and Payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and then we'll move on to Hats Off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I will, for the last time, just encourage people to vote. It is the last City Council meeting before Election Day on November 7th. And to put our city clerk, Leslie, on the spot again, I know there's some expanded voting hours in the final week. If you could highlight those for people, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I would be happy to. We will have voting on the Saturday before Election Day from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We're also open until 5:00 PM, the day before the election on Monday. And you can come, I'm sorry, and you can come to vote at City Hall, 6700 Portland Avenue.
And you can also do that during business hours, any weekday already. But those expanded hours are the final weekend.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I'd like to give a hats-off to Girl Scout Troop 18102 of Richfield here, and also Penn Nutrition. They are collecting through the month of November clothing and household items for the Epilepsy Foundation.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Haverly?
I just wanted to say how wonderful the opening of the bike park was, and Councilmember Wayland gave a great speech at that. And it continues, I'm seeing lots of pictures online of it crowded. It's been crowded every time I've gone past there, so it's a really popular amenity.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
And the last thing I'd mention is the, the Friends of Woodlake or Fowl fundraising dinner, which is this, November 3rd. It's a great event, it's a great opportunity to raise money for, for the Pearl of Richfield. And so don't miss that opportunity to be in community and support Woodlake Nature Center. Fowl Dinner, not this Friday, but the next Friday.
Thank you. And I wanted to do a thank you to the Lakeshore Drive Condominiums Resident Association for their hospitality. They hosted Councilmember Troutman and myself, and it was a great hour of discussion and questions and feedback. And so we'd love, we love getting out there and talking to people. I also wanted to do a shout-out to County Attorney Moriarty, hosted the suburban mayors to talk about different public safety initiatives. And one is like a preventive thing to work with youth so we can cut down on some of the things that are happening and, and get people help before they get into the actual formal criminal justice system. So that was a great opportunity to chat with her. And now I'm going to do some shameless promotions. So we had two great reports from commissions this evening, and we have commission openings that are going to be through October 31st. We've been getting a lot of great youth commissioners that are coming forward. We have one that we just found out about that's going to get approved at our November meeting, so we're really excited about that. And we would like to have others please come forward. So if you are interested, you can go on the city website, and there's a webpage that just deals directly with the commissions and how you can sign up. So whether you're a youth member or an adult, we would like you to join us by October 31st. And also, the Richfield Foundation is accepting grant applications through October 31st. So if you are a nonprofit that would like to get, has a project that you would like to get some funding on, you can submit the application to the Richfield Foundation, and there's a lot of great work that's done that way. So October 31st are those two sections. Now, normally at this point, after Hats Off to Hometown Hits, we... Now normally at this point, after hats off to hometown hits, we would move into adjourning the meeting. But we do have a closed session for attorney-client privilege that's been scheduled. So we're going to go through the official, formal, um, wording so that we can move to the Babcock Room to discuss that. And then we will come back here after the, um, closed session and close out the meeting. So you'll, just so you know what's about to happen. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Haverly to make the motion.
Um, I would move that we move to a closed session in the Babcock Room for the purposes of discussing an attorney-client privileged discussion, discussion pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05, subdivision 3B, to discuss the city's options to participate in a multi-district lawsuit and related class settlements entitled in regarding Aquas Film Forming Foam's Product Liability Litigation, United States District Court, District of Southern Cal- South Carolina, Charleston Division, MDL Number 218, MN 2873, RMB, Case Number 223, CB 03147, RMG, and Case Number 223, CB 0230, RMG.
All right, and this is why we have scripts for things like that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we're going to move into closed session afterwards. We'll return here to the council chambers. Thank you all for attending this evening.
We have to read some legal stuff.
I know, but I mean, yeah.
I moved that John Travolta plays Sean Heffert O'Leary in the last two weeks.
All right, do we need to wait for the city manager and everybody to come back here? Can we go ahead? All right, so, um, we are back in the open meeting, and so I'm going to state that the council just conducted a closed session for an attorney-client privileged discussion pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D .05 subdivision 3B to discuss the city's options to participate in a multi-district lawsuit and related class settlements entitled "In regard to aqueous film-forming foams products liability litigation, United States District Court, District of South Carolina, Charleston Division, MDL number 2:18-MN-2873-RMB and case number 2:23-CV-03147-RMG and case number 2:23-CV-03230-RMG." So now we are back in the open meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Ahem.